I'd like to call to order, please, the work session on Monday, June 9th. It is 5:00 PM. And as I look around the table, we have one councilman that is not here yet, but he is coming. That's Councilman Stip. So he'll be walking in probably during the work session. So we only have one item tonight in the agenda. And council, you're going to receive information on the Goodyear's Foreign Trade Zone Program. We're going to be able to discuss and request made and discuss requests made by the industrial property landowners. Harry Paxton, Economic Development Project Manager, 2 percent. Did I get that all right?
Yes.
I don't see them moving. That's why I asked. Yeah, I have to see movement of the bodies. You know, they're coming up here.
It's hot. It's natural.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Sherri Wakefield, Science Development Services Director. As many of you are aware, we've had our Foreign Trade Zone Program in Goodyear for just a few years now. And what we're hearing from the development community is interest in expanding that program to accommodate additional industrial sites within the community. In addition, as you are also aware, we have a consultant, Curtis Spencer, who works with the city and Wesmec, Wesmark, to consult on issues related to the Foreign Trade Zone policy. And his role in the community is to assist not only industry in defining areas where they can be more competitive with the Foreign Trade Zone, but also communities in defining what the impact of Foreign Trade Zones are to their community. And Curtis, in particular, reached out to our team here in Goodyear and requested that we may want to consider an expansion of our Foreign Trade Zone tax policy to allow us to remain competitive. And so therefore, we brought forward a few slides this evening and some concepts that we wanted to discuss with you and get some feedback. So with that, we'll get started.
Thank you.
Curtis should be joining us here in the next half hour or so. His flight was caught out of Houston two hours late, so we would expect him at any moment. We should have additional questions.
Great. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. One of the things we wanted to do first was to go over a few definitions with you. We've had some opportunities to come before you and talk about the Foreign Trade Zone, but we thought it might be helpful through our discussion to talk about some of those definitions to begin with, so that as we go through this discussion, we're all on the same page. A magnet site is defines a geographical area as approved, as an approved FTZ site. It generally includes large acres of vacant land. And that's what we've done with the three foreign trade zones that were approved, two back in 2009 and one in 2010. So that's a magnet site, which is kind of a general term to connotate that we're trying to drive industry and development to that site. So we've done that in our community, where the local council has approved those sites locally, and they've also been federally approved. A user-driven sites, a building, or at least a portion of a building with an activated user that is an approved FTZ location. So for example, that would be like Scholder-Arca Systems, which was approved back in 2011, where they took a portion of the former Rubbermaid Building. And locally, it was approved for them to be in a foreign trade zone, who just took a portion of that building. Also, Cookson Door is one that we're considering that, and that will be proposed later. So an activated user is a company that actually has gone through the federal approvals. So when you have done that approval here to allow a company or a site to be designated as a foreign trade zone, when the company actually comes through and has all their approvals through Customs and Department of Commerce, then they're activated. When they're activated federally, then the local benefits, the benefits that the local community and the state provides, they're available to them. An example of that would be Sub-Zero in our community, who is already an activated user, as well as Dick's Sporting Goods. The pilot fee, if you remember, is the fee that, to ensure that our tax policy is solid and we only add to the tax rolls, the pilot fee is the fee that we charge and that they must agree to according to our tax policy if they come into an area that already has improvements. For example, Sub-Zero is a great example of that, and we have an active pilot agreement with them, with distributions have been made to the taxing jurisdictions. So that pilot fee is a fee they pay annually, just like you would when you're paying your taxes. We collect that fee and then distribute it to the different taxing jurisdictions based upon the value of that asset when they occupied it. So those tax amounts that were there at the time they occupied it stayed the same. And then anything that they add to that building, or equipment that they bring in that building, then gets that 5 percent assessment racial treatment. Now, locally-approved site, which is a large part of what we're going to talk about tonight...
Can I interrupt you, Mayor?
Sure.
And I was looking to see if I read it, and I just don't know if it's coming down further in your presentation. What are those that that tax revenue goes to? So, i.e., I'd like the public to hear about the school systems, because that's always a concern when we, okay, one, will the schools be able to benefit? So can you address that?
Sure.
Are you addressing it later in this?
There's a little bit of information, yeah, on the amount, but those largest ones, you're right, are local school districts, and then, of course, the county and the community college. And there are several different taxing jurisdictions, all the way down to special taxing districts. And so we take those line item by line item and charge based upon that asset at the time that they activated or became a foreign trade zone. So today, we've distributed almost $800,000 to those taxing jurisdictions, just over the last couple of years.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Joe?
Just for clarification, they get approval on the federal first? You're saying they've got to meet certain criteria on the federal? That's got to be done? Is that the first step?
First step really is a local step. So if we want to designate it as a foreign trade zone, or as a magnet site, or user-driven site, when the user comes in even to a magnet site, if we've already designated the area as a magnet site, then they actually apply to the federal government, because we've made that local decision. If they meet the federal requirements, then they can go there. If they're outside of that magnet site, say, for example, like Scholder-Arca Systems, or Cookson Door, then that's a user-driven site. And so then the first action there would be to come to the council and to have the council designate that as a foreign trade zone. And then they've got to go through a process. We generally, at that time, already collect letters from the school districts. They've got to go through a process, get all those different taxing jurisdictions, to write letters of support, and then apply federally. They do that through the Greater Merkopa Foreign Trade Zone that's been set up, which is a separate entity in this area that covers our Foreign Trade Zone, which is a grantee from the federal government. It's a nonprofit organization which contracts with Wesmark. You're familiar with that. So they'll apply through that. The grantee will approve that application, and then it goes to the federal government, and they've got to meet a whole host of requirements.
So, I just want to make sure I understand it. So first, we have to have a site, whether it's magnet or driven by, they're not part of the magnet site, but if they're not, then we'd have to get the buy-off of all the other jurisdictions that they're in agreement for us to designate a site. That would be step one, if I understand.
Right.
Then when they go to the federal, there's certain requirements, I assume, on exports, or what percentage of their product is shipped overseas, and they've got to meet those stringent guidelines before the federal government gives them the okay. Then it's a matter of coming back to us, once that gets done? Is that how the mechanics work?
Yeah, in essence, that's correct. It's more about what they import. So it's here to impact companies that domestically import product, and then, yes, they may ship it overseas, once they have added value to it and manufactured their final product or distributed their final product. But the qualifying aspects of a company really has to do more with them importing product to reduce their costs to import, to help them to be more competitive with foreign competitors.
And then, as well, doesn't a certain percentage have to be American-made as well, actually here? Is that part of the requirement?
Not necessarily, no. Not necessarily.
I think you saw that in the paper recently. They brought it out there.
Well, yeah, I'm just wondering if there's, you know, a percentage, because, yeah.
I don't believe so. It's a good question, though, we could ask. Curtis will have a lot more detail on those requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So, an FTZ designation can help spur development. And what we've learned, again, from our development community over the last 18 months or so, is that there is the potential that, as we don't have as many FTZ-designated either sites or buildings in the community, that we are losing opportunity. And as you saw from our staff report, approximately 90-plus, depending upon the type of, whether it's industrial office users, locate in existing buildings here in Metro Phoenix.
Which we don't have.
Correct, Mayor. That is data from the Greater Phoenix Economic Council. And a big part of our issue here in the community today is that our vacancy rates are extremely low in the industrial and office market. And so the opportunity for the existing user to move into Goodyear in a timely fashion, and again, the difference between doing a tenant improvement that may take three months in another market, for us, is about an 18-month period from the day they make a decision on a site, in a typical scenario. Certainly, we can do it faster, but... And so the competitiveness and the decision-making points are very different if you have an existing site or an existing building. And certainly, one with an FTZ designation also makes it more appealing. So several industrial property owners have approached the city, and that includes everything from the Rubbermaid Site to the PV 303 team, and other additional sites they'd like to have designation on in their area. Liberty Property Trust adjacent to PV 303 on the 303 corridor has asked about this. The Trapp Properties, Elwood Logistics Property, has asked about having an FTZ designation. And we actually asked them to go back to their brokers who represent the properties and share a little bit of information, what they're hearing. Many of them brought their brokers in and talked to us, or provided us data. And what that data showed was the market where there were FTZ sites was having a much higher rate of conversion from prospect to locate when there was an FTZ designation in place.
Okay, I have a question. So somebody comes in on 303, and they see, I always say home site, we know it's not a commercial site, that they really want because of the exposure. So they come in, they say to us, "Okay, we're going to do a trade zone. Okay, this is, we want a foreign trade zone." So we go through that process, and lo and behold, when they finally build and come in, now they don't need it. Okay, how do we, how do we control that? Because I look at it as a tool sometime to get that commercial space that you think is most public and is going to give you the, you know, the biggest bang. So is there any safeguards on that? And I guess that is always my concern, is that those commercial sites that sit right on 303, not behind one another, are pretty premium. So how does that work?
Mayor, that's an excellent point. And I think probably the PV 303 property is the most obvious example of that, where we have parts of the site, there are 1,600 acres, which are already designated as FTZ, and parts which are not. And they have users coming forward in the future that will not need FTZ designation. So they were able to move some of their acreage around on their property to create additional FTZ designation, not greater area, but use it on sites where it was needed. And so that's part of what begs the question today in the conversation, is should there be some flexibility within an area to accommodate these users? Perhaps a parcel right on the corner isn't the one they want. Maybe they want the one behind. And so that's part of the policy that we'd like to discuss with you today.
All right, thank you.
Now, the last point is somewhat important. And so that gets to the issue of, do we have existing buildings? No, we don't have a lot of existing buildings in Goodyear. But do we want to encourage speculative development or user-driven building construction? I think the answer is, we certainly would like to be competitive and hope to be able to encourage that. And so in that instance, we've heard, again, on, for example, the Elwood Project, that they are very interested in moving forward on a speculative basis, but have asked for this FTZ designation. And Trapp Properties, for example, is one that has a national holdings all over the country in terms of industrial properties, and was very articulate, I think, with their brokerage team about the advantages of bringing nationwide clients to Goodyear, should we have the FTZ in place. But there's another element to the conversation, which is also competitiveness within our market, right? So in instances where we have an FTZ designation, for example, across the street at PV 303 from Liberty Property Trust, or along 303 at the Macy's site, or the Duke site, is that competitive with the sites that might be adjacent to it if they don't have FTZ designation?
Okay, thank you.
Mayor.
Joe?
If we have to get approval in our policy from all the other taxing jurisdictions first, and we're looking to be a little more out front as far as designating an area so we can get some respect buildings, I assume that's the first thing that we would have to do, even if we wanted to do that? Because I guess I was thinking, what's the upside, more availability? What's the downside, is maybe the other taxing jurisdictions? I guess, I can't think of a downside unless there's something you can share with me if we don't do it.
Yeah, our practice in the past has been to go to our school districts, once our council has, you know, once you've got direction from the council that we want to consider areas for foreign trade zone, go to our school districts and obtain those letters of support. And then the practice really is, becomes a private one, in which the property owner, their consultant, maybe Curtis Spencer, it could be someone else, would work with them. And then we would be in communication with those taxing jurisdictions as well, in terms of what our support is, and it's up to them to obtain those letters of support.
Okay.
And we'd like to walk through, again, a little bit of the specific history of the FTZ in Goodyear, and then some discussion on the policy, as we'd like to evaluate it moving forward.
You'll recall back in July of 2009, it's been several years since we did this, actually, we first started this process, back in July of 2009, we came before the council and designated two areas, 230 acres owned by EJM Development, just actually east of here, where you see the construction happening today, which point out that that's one of the reasons we, talking with the property owner, that they've gone forward with that instruction, construction, that spec infrastructure is because they have a foreign trade zone designation and want to attract a project. They are limited in the amount of time that they can have a magnet site designation approved by the federal government. They've only got so long to get an activated user. That's one of the things that they're working on.
How long is that?
Five years, and then probably about another year before, you know, the federal government actually, you know, takes the action and goes forward. So they're moving forward. It's helped us, in that sense, bring forward some infrastructure, because they really want to win a project, they don't want to lose that federal designation.
So can I ask a question?
Sure.
So say they don't move forward, can they reapply for the federal designation?
Yes, they could reapply.
But there's probably a lag there.
Yeah, what they want to do is, they definitely want to get their site vested. They'll really be vested with the federal government, once they get an activated user on their site. And so if they've got infrastructure in, their likelihood of attracting an activated user increases significantly. That's one of the reasons why they're going forward, was that, infrastructure.
Joanne?
Question. So if we do a speculative site for a foreign trade zone, we obviously are giving permission to do that for something to come in, and we don't have any idea at this point what's going to be coming in. Will we have the final say of approving, yes, this is an entity that we would want? Will we have that opportunity again? Or will there be guidelines ahead of time of, it has to be this type of, you know, company before, you know, it's going to be acceptable? I mean, how will that work?
That's a very good question, and that's part of what we need to discuss, is how we develop a policy going forward. What we've done on the magnet sites, so that, if I haven't explained it completely, I want to make sure we all understand, those magnet sites, we've already made that local decision. So if someone meets the federal requirements, then they can go to those sites and obtain those benefits, the federal benefits, as well as the local benefits. Outside of those areas, then they've got to come back to the council. That's a very good example, be like Scholder-Arca Systems, where that's a user-driven site. So that's part of what we need to discuss, as we go forward and develop or amend our tax policy, or have a spec building policy, whatever we want to call it, is what are our requirements going to be? So that's part of what we wanted to bring before the council and discuss tonight.
My, so, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Joanne.
We want to be competitive, and we want to use as many tools, I'm sure, as we can. I'm just, I couldn't even come up with some kind of company right now that I'd say, absolutely not, do I want to give them that kind of? I don't know what it is offhand, you know? I mean, I don't know. Maybe something to do with taking brains out of animals, I don't know. But, you know, I can't tell you. But I just, that would be my only thought, was, you know, if there's something that we absolutely just don't want in our city, you know, what would be those things? And so it's hard to say.
How about introducing your guest a minute? That might help, too.
Sure. Yeah, I want to introduce Curtis Spencer, who's the president of IMS Worldwide, and actually just flew in right now from Houston. He got here a little bit late, his flight was delayed, so we really appreciate you, Curtis. He also changed his schedule when we requested it about a week and a half ago. So we appreciate your flexibility, Curtis.
Thunderstorms in Houston kept me on the tarmac for like an hour and 45 minutes.
It blew in last night, ahead of the storm, so I know.
Well, you were smarter than me.
I am.
Just a point on that, because that's a great point, that everybody has to, every city has to deal with that. That's what you have planning and zoning for. So you can control who goes in, and, you know, your idea or your example of...
Who knows?
That's a good example, because there's some dirty nasty businesses out there that need a place to go. Most of the time, they will choose much more rural locations to do those things. I remember trying to get an FTZ permit for a explosives manufacturer in Wyoming, and they went as far out as they could go from customs, but they needed to have that FTZ benefit, but nobody wanted explosives in the middle of a bunch of subdivisions. So there are, and planning and zoning is a way to control that. The FTZ benefit that you have, and our firm is national, we do this all over the country for 35 years, I've been doing this. You have absolutely the best incentive in the entire country. The entire country. I mean, sometimes Arizona feels like it can't compete with Texas. You know, they got the closing fund, and they got Governor Perry out trying to pull people from all over California, New York, wherever. Arizona has got an ace in the hole. If it's restricted, or held off, or, you know, well, we got to make this decision, then we got to make that decision, we got to make, you're going to get, you know, passed over for the guy in Utah that says, "I'll give you free land." And we did some calculations, and free land equivalent for a big building is worth about 25 cents a square foot, all in. FTZ is worth about a dollar, all in. So we get to beat free land over the head. That's a huge thing. So use your planning and zoning to keep the nasties out.
What's your fastest timeframe, if somebody wanted to start construction and have that qualification? I'm sorry. I'll just take mine, since I, sorry, I didn't see her.
Sure. What's the fastest? What was the question?
Yeah, so somebody comes in, and they have a real delivery date that they're really targeting for.
In terms of getting a building built?
So what is your, the quickest you've ever seen done? I'm just looking for...
Well, the quickest you've ever seen is of somebody who moves into an existing building, which is a whole lot of what...
Well, other than that, we know that's not even, that's not even a point here in Goodyear.
But it is a side point, Mayor, that will have that ability.
Oh, if it's spec built.
Because if we have the FTZ pre-tax approved status, you're going to get some guys who want to build spec buildings.
Yeah.
And Goodyear has no spec buildings.
That's right.
There are 7.8 million square feet in the market, Goodyear has zero.
You're, we're all really aware of that.
We got to get some. We got to get some.
Yeah, we know.
And we need it.
And so...
But the actual building is six to nine months. If you really, if you got your permit ready and you're kicking it, you can get six to nine months, you can have a building on it.
Okay, thank you. Sherri?
I was just wondering, what is the optimum amount to go for? Like, how much do we take down for this? Or what do you recommend, like parcel size? Because it's looking like 30 to around 300, and so what do you recommend?
I think we looked at the total amount of industrial acreage that you have, either in your planning area as industrial, or you've already zoned it industrial. And it's like 0.6 percent of all the land in Goodyear.
It's pretty high.
So if you look at what it could be going to the extreme, you're less than 1 percent of all the land in Goodyear, you set up as, has this FTZ capability. And if you look at that history, which I think you guys have been showing...
We have.
I've seen the, kind of know where we are in the thing. Yeah, see, that's, that's not a whole lot of land, guys.
I didn't think so.
And it certainly won't be all used. I mean, we have an example already in PV 303, which is the most prominent FTZ site we have, and only two of the three landowners are going to use foreign trade zone. And one of them's a manufacturer, and that was a really good deal. We succeeded, you guys succeeded quite well with Sub-Zero.
Just like a few more.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Joe?
Just a comment. I like the fact that if you can do some restrictions at zoning, just to keep the ones that you don't want in there. But to me, it seems like the cart after the horse, or before the horse, whatever the case may be, is when you look at Cookson, and I'm thinking, what's the upside of somebody who's already here giving them credit? It seems to me you want it before they come, because if they're already here, they're already here.
Yeah, I think Cookson was already...
You know, that should be part of the initial... So to me, it makes sense to have it, to get them here where you're encouraging them, whether it's spec buildings or what. Once they're here, you're giving something that, they're already here. See, so, I mean, it makes sense to me...
Yeah, you make a really good point.
On the spec side, as long as you can restrict what may end up going in there.
I think Cookson would not have decided to come here if they'd not known that they were going to get FTZ. That's all the discussions that I've had.
We haven't voted on them. I haven't had any discussions with that, so...
Well, I'm close to the landowner, and they knew that they were going to be able to get it under the...
Oh, no.
Brian?
And if I may, just on Cookson, that was in our offer letter that went to Cookson, as far as an opportunity for FTZ. In addition to, they were bringing X amount of jobs, capital investments, so that's actually in the letter and working with them. So it was very important for them.
All right, from my perspective, we didn't see it as a council, so... And I appreciate that. I don't think it ever came to us for council, but to me, it makes more sense the other way on spec.
Oh, yeah.
Because if you got to vote on something after it's already there that hasn't come to us, to me, that's like backwards. So I appreciate what you're bringing, as long as we have the ability to, through zoning, if something comes out we don't want.
Absolutely. And you should always retain that. I mean, as a council, you should always retain that ability to planning and zoning.
I'm going to hold it just a minute, just to recognize, the Councilman Stip is now here at the work session.
For the list.
Well, for the public, all right. Raleigh?
So if we do designate a larger area than what we have, it doesn't necessarily mean it will be used as that. It would just have the ability, should someone come in and say, "Oh, I like that parcel," and then our development people can say, "Well, it's a foreign trade zone," which would perhaps entice them.
Yeah, what we're going to say is that it has all the local approvals to become a foreign trade zone. Because once you have that, and that's, when Harry and I started this, we had to get three letters. We now have to get seven letters. And that's a lot of work, because you've got seven different taxing entities that have meetings just like this, and time, et cetera. Once all those letters are in, for X number of years, or how long the letters are good for, then it's a physical 30-day process with the federal government. Man, that's super fast. So that's within that timeframe of, let's narrow the sites down from 11 to two or three. Goodyear, you get to stay in the top three, because you have that. You have those letters.
So if we get the letters...
Yes, ma'am.
Then we can designate what area we want them used in.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm sure other cities have already done this, because...
Yes, ma'am.
They are getting the business we don't get, because we don't have the designation.
Yes, ma'am.
So they must, it must be easy to get it from the taxing authority.
Well, it's not easy. They would say it's easy, but, and each land, each parcel, so if you've got a 300-acre landowner that says, "I want to spend the money to go get this done," then they get that for that 300 acres, and it's set as that. What you guys are doing, and I commend the mayor and the staff on indicating those geographic areas where we will, as a council, support that, you will, as a council, I think it's great, because that's the, that's really getting ahead of the bus, in my opinion. That's saying, "Okay, landowners, if you're wanting to go through this, you have the ability to do it, because we've said we'll support it."
Okay, thank you. Okay, go ahead.
So, Council, our, the last slide here is some of the parameters under which we hear you discussing tonight, when we would like to consider a change to the tax policy that would create a period of time here in the community where if an investment was made, and we're just putting in some round parameters for discussion, someone were to construct at least 200,000 square feet, and in each case, this is an industrial user, so that's an important distinction. And then they have the developer on the sites that are within the zone, and we'll go back to that map in just a moment, would have five years to attract an activated FTZ user to that site. And keeping in mind that then it takes a while to construct a building post, you know, the time that they select a user and a site. So it could be as much as 18 months beyond that five-year period where someone would be going through the entitlement process, but would be grandfathered under the original five-year policies. So, for example, if we were to start this in, you know, August of 2014, we'd have five years moving forward, and anyone that were to fall under this new tax policy then could have as much as, you know, potentially 18 months or longer to complete their project beyond the five-year... beyond the five-year period, just so that we're clear that that's... And again, our goal is to encourage not only spec building, but also user-driven sites, potentially as well, but to certainly activate the speculative building market.
One of the points that we should also make, and if I can take a minute and make it, is remember we were going through our Focus on Success process, and doing that evaluation in the community? If you look at our community, we've got about three thousand acres south of I-10 that's available today. We have about two thousand acres north of I-10 that's available today for industrial development. In that study, one of the things that was highlighted in there is, if you stretch a little bit and say, "We're somewhat semi-shovel-ready on some of those sites, too shovel-ready," it's probably less than seven-hundred-and-fifty acres. You know, so that's one of the things we wanna achieve with this policy, is trying to leverage that as well, to help us to get more shovel-ready sites. Some of the users might not be, say, a Sub-Zero-type user and manufacturer over time, but as property owners invest money in these sites, if we can leverage the FTZ and help us to get shovel-ready sites, and get sites with buildings, that helps us get much closer to where we need to be on shovel-ready sites, to help us to be competitive.
Joanne?
So, I really don't have, you know, a problem with this. I think, you know, this is beneficial for us. I think that, for myself, when it would finally come to us to vote upon, the things that I would like to see, part of what the vice mayor said was, you know, let's see what those requirements and guidelines are at, you know, planning and zoning level, so we feel comfortable that we're not opening the door to something we don't want. And also, I would say, because we don't know five years from now who the council may be, let's have that final opportunity for the council to say, "You know what? It's still in our hands of a yes or no." I guess that's part of my feeling of security, I guess.
But you wanna move forward, but substantiating that you...
I would want to move forward, but I think there's some...
There's a chance that...
Control mechanisms in there, that we still have the final say, you know?
I think what we're contemplating tonight is, the map that we provided you with, is those areas where we expect that property owners want this designation. And so, we've expected they would come to us, and that we would work out an agreement along the lines of the concept we're talking about, you know, so many square feet have constructed, building, all the development standards, infrastructure, and all those things provided. At that point, we would have the ability to, is that agreement meets your qualifications? Within a tax policy that is uniform and fair to all, so, that's what we contemplate with this map, is not that universally it's all approved, but that each property owner, as they come forward, we would have direction from council to consider their property if it lies within those areas, and to begin working on what that agreement would be.
And so, marketing on your spec, can you talk to the public about size, when, you know, you're gonna build? So, what is it, what is it we're looking for to really fill those buildings?
Yeah, often when we get requests, you know, they're a hundred thousand square feet, two-hundred thousand square feet, we wanna be somewhere in that ballpark of those buildings, at least. Many of these property owners are looking at, you know, buildings like Sub-Zero's, a cross-dock building, and, you know, could be very flexible to include a number of users.
Ceiling heights?
Ceiling height, you know, we're, you know, many of them are above thirty-five feet today, and clearance inside, so you're talking a building that exceeds forty feet with the outside measurements.
I just want the public to hear that.
Can we, can we let them come at forty-five thou, forty-five feet, I would hope?
Yeah, that's a zoning, that's a zoning question. Some sites have that already, some may need to come back forward with amendment to their zoning.
How big was Sub-Zero, how big was Sub-Zero's thirty-two?
I think they're thirty-two foot clear inside.
No, I'm sorry, square feet.
Yeah, the building, original building is about four-hundred-and-forty thousand square feet, they added a mezzanine inside, they're a little over five-hundred thousand square feet today.
What about water usage? Is that something that we, I mean, obviously, it's gold to us, so what...
That's the user.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, or Councilmember Osborne, that's correct. It will come into play in any instance where we have a pre-application meeting with the user. We have the water wastewater team in that evaluation process today, where they will look at their process, and what it has within the water quality, both water and wastewater, and then the quantity as well. And then, in addition, there's a third component, which is where in the city is that user? Are they on our system? Are they on, you know, one of our partner systems? And can we accommodate it, and what is the cost?
Well, I guess the question is, I don't know that we've ever, I don't know that we've ever really discussed that, as a council or not, of, do we say that, you know what, a high, intense user of water is something we just do or do not want in our city? I've just, I don't know, we've never really, I don't know.
I don't know if we've done it at council, I know that I've had conversations, many conversations about that.
Mayor, Councilmember Osborne, that's correct, there has not been policy direction on water users, per se, but it's something we actively look at. If a large water user comes in, or even where they happen to be located, one, yeah, the pipe sizes be able to generate the water there, but the other is, is quite frankly, do we have the capacity?
Right.
And that's looked at. Part of the development team that we have here looks at all those when they come in. And also, getting a little bit ahead of council, when we go through the rate study process, will, and the infrastructure, or, excuse me, the Integrated Water Master Plan, we'll be getting a tool out of that where you can just plug and play, you can start to plug in, because right now, it's a little more cumbersome, a lot more cumbersome, but it'll allow us to then do a lot quicker modeling for large water users. But right now, it is evaluated.
So, I guess, I guess, just assurance that when it comes to council, that we will have that information, I guess, that's on those decision makings. Yes?
I just wanted to bring up what some of the other, you mentioned some of the other communities are doing. So, Buckeye, Avondale, and Surprise are all supporting pre-tax approved sites, and I think there'll be one coming into Glendale here in the next six to eight months, that are non-restrictive in nature. In other words, if you meet planning and zoning, and you meet the federal guidelines, we will support you for X number of years. And I like your idea of the X number of years, because it allows a future council to then say, "Hey, we don't wanna do that anymore, we wanna be more restrictive." I would caution this council against putting any secondary approvals on a potential user, because you're gonna hogtie your marketing team, these guys here. And that's, they're competing against Utah, California, New Mexico, Texas, that have other things that are totally outside of our control, cheaper electricity, or cheaper land, things that we can't control. We can only control what we can control. And so, I would strongly suggest that if you do it, have this policy for five-year basis, that you say, anybody that qualifies under planning and zoning, under federal guidelines, you're welcome. And then, you know, the lead that you have already, as Goodyear, over the other cities, you get to maintain that lead.
And I can understand that. I guess the biggest thing would be on the planning and zoning side, that we're making sure we feel comfortable with.
Yeah, my only concern is, go back with what you had mentioned earlier under the planning and zoning, is not so much whether it meets its guidelines, I'm more concerned with the actual business that's in there on what we're recruiting. So, I think, what you had mentioned, that's kinda my concern, that they just don't meet the guidelines, and that it's also a business that we want, you know, as a council. So, I agree with you, I don't wanna put more restrictions on it. The same token, I don't wanna turn it all over, where we get something that you don't want.
Here's another really important point. You got a whole bunch of landowners out here that wanna sell land and sell buildings. The ones that have FTZ status and go through that time and expense of getting at least a pre-approved status, are gonna want their buildings for the cream of the crop. They're gonna want their land to sell and be used for the cream, and they're gonna have Sub-Zero next to them, and somebody else next to them, and, I mean, even in the Site One, EJM Site, we got a brand-new company we brought in from Chicago that's gonna move in there. So, there's a lot going on in this area, where the status of having this FTZ, even pre-designation, is better than not having it at all. And I think you're, there's a natural economic effect that precludes a hog slaughterhouse, sorry if there's anybody in the hog business, but just as an example. Well, you might not want that in the middle of your town, you won't have it, because Sub-Zero's is that, "Don't put that next to me," you know, so...
So, they have say.
Well, I mean, the landowner's gonna wanna hold it for a higher and better use. The nastier businesses wanna pay a lot less for the land.
Mayor and council, if I might interject as well. Of course, as we've talked about with the design guidelines, there are several layers, all right? So, we have the general plan as a guidance from our community, as to what land use is appropriate, and which compatible land uses are throughout the geography of our community. So, that's, that's number one. Then, we have the planning and zoning process, which allows us, through our zoning ordinance, to dictate what areas, and how much of each area is designated for particular types of uses. And then, of course, we have special use permits and other restrictions that are in our zoning ordinance, that allow us to say, you know, when and how these uses occur. So, I think there are multiple controls, and the public process is certainly a piece of every stage of this. So, the local approval process for the FTZ from the different users, and the different taxing jurisdictions, is all a public process, along with the zoning process. So, there's several inputs along the way, not only for council, but for the community as well.
Bill?
You know, I, Sherry, I appreciate those comments, and I think we also have the ability not to incentivize a development we don't want coming in either, so...
That's true.
Because typically, that, if they're coming into the FTZ, they're coming in looking for...
They want more.
Something else, and we can say, "Oh, we're just, oh, you do what? Sorry."
Yeah.
So, I think there's a number of things that we have in our toolbox that we can use without adding restrictive language to the policy, so...
You're right on.
From my point of view, I'd like to just see us go with what has been presented. I think it's clearly understood what the desire of this council, what the desire of previous councils, and I'm sure going forward, what those future councils want. The City of Goodyear produces the kind of people that it elects that really look out for it, so, and we've got a number of avenues to make it, to make it go, so, that's my point of view.
You don't wanna box us in.
Yeah, exactly.
Or box you in.
Thank you so much.
We truly do not.
Well, you got a great team here, and they've had, in the West Valley, they've had the best success.
Mm-hmm.
We wanna keep that going.
Well, being the fastest-growing city, and Maricopa County, and sixth in the nation, yeah, you can see where we're going. Okay. Joe?
Just, just real quick, I don't wanna box us in either, as councilman's tip, I just wanna make sure, and he raises a good point, that, and again, I think it's important to be out in front, as opposed to coming back afterwards when they're already building, and we have to take some action. I got a problem with that personally, but if we're out in front, I like that. I like the fact, the idea of already having the land designated. But at the same token, what Bill had mentioned, I like the fact where he talks about, there are avenues in which we can ensure some of the issues that Councilmember Osborne mentioned won't happen, so...
And some of these site selectors guys are ridiculous. I mean, Harry and I were working on a project that, that Harry said, "We have to pass on it." Buckeye ended up saying, "We gotta pass on it, it's going to Castle Grant." Perfect example.
That's fine.
Okay, so, just on that, I just wanna feel comfortable, if you can, whether you email it or something, but let us know what those restrictions are, or what we're talking about, you know, what the nasties are, in your opinion, what they are, so, we just feel comfortable ahead of time, but, right.
Don't our planning and zoning nip it? I mean, we're putting people on that committee that are dogs.
That's not it, it's just what are our guidelines? I just wanna know what our guidelines are, I just wanna feel comfortable with it.
Guidelines for what? Who's coming into our city?
I think she's saying that she wants to have a group of guidelines printed up, that are handed to us, that, because I'm using where you are too.
Well, you know, I just wanna, you know, if, if a company is some kind of pollution, or the slaughterhouse, back to that example, if it's something like that, and we all know that's not what we want, but we have nothing that says, "No, these guys can't come in," I just wanna know what we have, that's what I'm just asking for. What do we have as a protection for some of those things?
Mayor and council, if I might, we have zoning, but we also have, we also have pretty good direction, I think, from our Economic Development Strategic Plan, which, right, engaged our business community in a discussion about those targeted industries, which we would prefer to incentivize and locate in our community. So, that's one document, and then certainly, the general plan is very prescriptive about what areas we want, which type of uses. And then, the zoning ordinance, and again, any case where they're gonna need a special use permit, and our zoning ordinance is pretty tight in that.
Sherry?
I think you hit what I was gonna say, I think we've got it there, it may not be a list, and I would be kind of concerned about starting to make lists, because I think lists get out, and when list gets out, people say, "These people make lists, we don't wanna go there." I think we need to basically have some faith and trust in our team, and our city manager, that you guys know what we're looking at through the general plan, through our guidelines that we have stated, and I'm sure if something comes in that you guys are not quite sure about, we can have a session about bringing that, and we've had it before, where you guys can say, "We're not sure how you guys think about that," and then we can all get together and talk about it in an executive session, since it's a business that may be locating, if there's a question that it seems like it's a little bit outside. I just really don't wanna see lists being emailed, because I think that can scare off businesses that might say, "Why is this one on the list?" And they may not know why this one's on the list, what you're thinking.
I'm not thinking of the list, though.
Well, when you start emailing back and forth, I'd just be concerned about being so, and just, I think our guidelines are sufficient.
That's what I, I just wanna see what we already have.
Okay, so, our zoning ordinance does have prescriptive prohibited uses, and so, we can share those.
I just wanna feel comfortable, and I just want you to say, "Here it is, within our ordinances, here's, I'm not looking for lists, but just feeling comfortable that we..."
Yes.
One last comment, I think it'd be wise to take your construct building within three years to getting the final permit within three years, because I know how financing and things go with time. That way, you're, again, you're assisting your development teams out there to be able to do that, and construction is another nine to twelve months, so you, it could be as long as twelve, depending, but, so you wanna, you know, that gives the incentive, that puts a little timer on there, so you guys gotta be serious.
Say it again, what you want, please?
To have building permits completed and signed off by city within three years of the agreement.
Certificate of occupancy.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to... Is there a legal question to concern?
I think we previously talked about, when do you start that clock? I think a permit is probably a reasonable way to start the clock, but it also, construction likely needs to be completed within a reasonable amount of time, too, issues with the permit, but they don't start construction for X amount of time, so...
But I think our ordinances have some timeframes built in, so...
We do.
So, I think the permit is probably a reasonable way to start the clock, when we put the policy together.
Okay. Any other questions? Is anything else the staff wants to say? All right, well, thank you very much, thanks for coming. I know it was a tough evening for you.
Appreciate it, rushing in at the last minute.
I know, but we appreciate you, you persevering.
Oh, thank you so much.
Through the, I don't know, it's the tornado warnings and storms, and you name it.
It's a good council, you guys know what you're doing. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, ma'am.
Wait, before you go, council, you just have to give a little credit to these two gentlemen. First of all, we didn't have this in our hands, did we? When, why don't you tell them a little background before they go, since some of them weren't on the council, how we decided we wanted to go trade zone, and what happened? Remember, they came down, and they interviewed us, and they left, and then they gave it to Phoenix, and then we went back to them again. It was pretty unusual circumstances, and normally, this does not happen. And so, I just want you to review before they go, give them the background, just a little bit, and I think it's worth it for the public who's never heard it, and for the council that may be on here that have not heard that.
Well, thank you, Mary, I appreciate that opportunity. Yeah, it was quite the ordeal to have our foreign trade zone approved. We had started working on this back in 2008, pretty extensively with Curtis, and wanted to put together a different kind of a model. After evaluating how these services are given to businesses, and how things are done in the foreign trade zone world, it became very clear to us that what we really needed was someone at the table like Curtis Spencer, working with us, helping us bring companies in. And so we decided to put together a different model, a model that not just represented one city, but a model that represented the West Valley, so it became a coalition of cities that wanted to put that together. And then also have Curtis, at the same time, helping us, and under contract, which what became the Greater Maricopa Foreign Trade Zone. So all the different cities agreed to do that. We had sent an application to the federal government, and then we had a lot of roadblocks because of established foreign trade zones in the valley, of which most of the, most of that area west of I-17, where it just covered the West Valley, was not included in a foreign trade zone. And it didn't allow our property owners to do what we've been talking, in order to have their sites established as magnet sites, to become a catalyst for development. So we ran into some conflicts, but through Curtis, through the support of the mayor and the council and other cities, we were able to show that through the coalition of cities, how important a foreign trade zone was to us. And in fact, that foreign trade zone was approved after a lot of work, back in December of 2010. It took a lot of work, and since that time, we've had some good success. In fact, we kind of came out the gate with some very good success, and it's one of the fastest-growing foreign trade zones. Lately, we've hit a lull, it's probably some of the market reason as to why, and this is one of the reasons why we feel need to be more aggressive now. Things haven't come back as fast as what we'd want them to come back. But you're right, Mayor, through your support, and through the council's support, and through other cities' support, we have a very unique-
And Westmark.
And Westmark. Westmark was a key, and is a key today, contracts with the Greater Maricopa Foreign Trade Zone, and we literally wouldn't be here without Westmark.
There wasn't a Maricopa Trade Zone before, was there?
That's right.
There wasn't, it was, they were putting us under Phoenix, and we protested that. And so, out of that, Westmark came to the table, so.
Right, and what we have is something unique, you know? When a city needs to contact Curtis to tell them that they're working on a project together, then contact Curtis. And Curtis is under contract, paid by the landowners, who pay an annual fee for their land, and then also the different users that are attracted, so that nonprofit organization contracts with Westmark for marketing services, and with Curtis for that technical advice, and it helps us to bring companies in, and it's unique. There's not one like it in Arizona, and there's very few like it in the country, but it helps us and gives us all that flexibility that we need. Definitely think it's the right model for us to work under.
Thank you for telling this. Wally?
So when they come back, what are they going to bring back to us?
All right, let them tell you.
What do you want from us?
Yeah, we want to bring forward a policy, and we'll have more discussion with landowners. We want to bring forward a policy that is something that is a catalyst for building, spec buildings, and bringing infrastructure. We believe that having a designation, as we discuss with each of those landowners, a policy somewhere around this kind of a framework, will be able to bring back to you, property owner by property owner, what they've agreed to do within some guidelines of a policy that's developed.
So would it be an ordinance of the policy? And then landowners who want to apply under that policy can apply.
Are you going to ask us as a council to extend the foreign trade zone to other areas?
That's correct.
Okay. And it's a green area you're showing us, but nothing else but the green areas?
The dark green are existing, and the lighter green are the proposed new addition.
The lighter green is all the extension.
We don't have anything in West Goodyear that we could throw in, could we, if we're doing it?
If I may-
I have a lot near my house.
If I may, Councilmember Campbell, if you look at the light green areas, and really what we focused on is the industrial areas, and we focused on the transportation corridors, so MC-85 being a truck route, also the 303. We did exclude, because it doesn't really pertain to retail, for example, anything else along Cotton Lane that is not marked out there. So the goal is, is to stay within the transportation truck corridors, because typically, these are, you know, they will have trucks, whether it's manufacturing or distribution, so that's why these were selected.
Keeps them out of the neighborhoods, the trucks, so.
No, yeah, you're right. Well, you know what, I apologize, now that I've enlarged my screen, it goes to citrus, and that's pretty west. So thank you very much. That's what I, that's the area I was talking about, I'm sorry, I should have, I'm blind.
Any other questions or comments? Curtis, thank you so much again. Harry, thank you. Sherry, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to start this regular meeting. I guess we'll have to, can I, do I have to start it right at 6:00, or can I just? All right, all right, we'll have, let's take, say, 10 minutes, we'll be up at the dial, so it gives you enough. This meeting is adjourned.